I'd like to call the Front Row Town Council or maybe get back. Front Row Way old work session to get tonight called Monday, June 26, 2020. And I'm a roll call.
Sure. Mayor Tewa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tewa?
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Councilman Conchrell? Here. Councilman Glassby?
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, first item tonight is the INI debt service. Matt?
I'm sorry, I was trying to do, um...
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt please?
Sure. Excuse me, you are, go ahead Neil.
I'd like to add a, uh, another item to the agenda for this evening. I'd like to add a closed session to discuss personnel.
Your second?
Second.
And I'm a roll call please.
Vice Mayor Tewa?
Yes.
Councilman Conchrell?
Yes.
Councilman Glassby?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll add item nine to our agenda tonight.
Mr. Tewa, did you want to have an actual vote at the work session for that, or was it just census you were getting?
Well, really census, you're right. Yeah, don't show that as actual vote, you're right. We can't vote it up, work session, you're right. Sorry, Mark, take that off the agenda if you would. Anyway, we have consensus that it's got to be, had to be the full council approval of that, so that's, that's been approved, okay. Next item tonight is item number one, the INI debt service.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, we have, uh, I mean, Doug's on, right? Doug's on, uh, from CHA in the event, we need to pull him in. They have a rather lengthy engineering report in their packet, but what we're seeking, we're seeking approval to move along with the, uh, application to fund a debt service for the $8 million for the INI. Uh, we're potentially looking to receive zero interest, up to 2% interest, and 20 or 30 year note, we won't know until we actually submit the application. So, I wanted to bring it before the work session, have you asked any questions? And with your approval, we'll put it on a regular meeting next week for a vote.
BJ, is there anything else I missed?
The, um, actually, uh, the, the application has to be made by July 10th, so we're just letting council know that we're going to be making application, see if there's any concerns, so we don't need a formal vote, uh, to move forward with the application. We'll be coming back to council at a later time once we have approval from the, um, from the loan services and see exactly what we're approved for and what rate we can get and things like that. Uh, but mainly just to let council know that we are making application and see if there were any concerns before we move forward with that.
When do you think might be?
Um, Doug, do you have any idea when we may receive, uh, word on the, um, approval on that?
Doug, you're on mute. Can you unmute your mic? Oh, hang on. Actually, let's try that. Hey Doug?
Yes?
Hey, um, go ahead BJ.
Um, the, any idea when we may receive the, um, uh, the approval from the bank as to what we're, what we're approved for on that loan?
We, we won't know until after we get awarded.
Okay, well...
The amount in the fall, and, and actually, you really won't know the final interest rate. Well, but there's a potential for 0% interest, we'll hear about that likely in the fall. Um, if we, if we are not able to, you know, if the economics still work out where you would receive the ceiling interest rate, then, um, that won't, interest rate won't, won't be known until right when we close, which will probably won't be until, um, the spring of next year. So there, the ceiling rate is variable, it, it changes month to month. Right now, it's, uh, right now, it's less than 2% for a 25-year term.
So, we'll be coming back to council as we move along and get more information.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just as a, as a side, oh.
So, is there any other question, anybody?
Okay, we'll make application this week.
Just to add some more information about the INI program, uh, Robbie, do you want to give a brief summary of how aggressive we're approaching the INI and what's happening right now and planning to happen next several months?
Sure. Uh, right now, we're already doing the pipe bursting. Uh, Portland's about 80% done with it. Um, Tri-State Utilities has been working on the CIPP lining of the mains, um, and they've got a good bit of that done. Uh, Hyder Structures has been on the Cameron for the next, next year's phases, uh, they've got two Cameron crews that's been working, probably about a month now, uh, looking for the next areas that need to be done. Uh, Bush Hong is getting ready to do 100 some manhole lid, or manhole frame and cover replacements, um, to help with getting the water out of those. Um, lateral lining, so we've been getting a lot done the last few months.
So we have four contractors?
Uh, six.
Six contractors rolling throughout town?
Six different contractors, uh, and then CHA is still working on the stuff for FR5 at the bridge, the survey work's done, and they're just trying to get all the other utilities marked that was there, uh, for that, uh, creek crossing area to replace that piece.
And we have application in for the rip ramp, right?
For the creek?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the creek land, yeah, we're working on that now with the state for the fine stuff, yeah.
Where are they working at as far as digging up the manholes at this point?
For the frame and covers?
Well, I mean, up our way over NASA, they were digging it all the way down.
Uh, that was the pipe bursting?
Was that what the bursting?
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah, they, they, what they, they've replaced, uh, most of those manholes, they've been replacing as they do the bursting.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good, I just want to give you guys a sense, we, we can't attack it any harder than we are, in my opinion. And thank, thank Public Works Crew and their supervisors who are spot checking and, um, are getting pretty good, you know, mostly they're getting good jobs on the asphalt, the patchwork as well.
Patchwork's been great up our way.
Yeah, we, we had a couple incidents, but we've, um, we've been on it pretty hard. Thank you Robbie, thanks, members of council.
Thank you Doug.
Thanks Doug.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, next item tonight is CBDG update, Matt?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a lot happening with CDVG. Um, as a summary in your packet, you'll see in the facade improvement program, um, as you know, we, we switched to materials only, and apparently that, uh, in essence, I think that saved the program. Um, and I want to thank, uh, Craig Wilson for, uh, you know, helping us through that process. Uh, the town is actively working with 14 property owners regarding improvements for their buildings, uh, and what we're seeking, we're seeking to raise the limit to $30,000, uh, as opposed to the current limit of $20,000. Uh, we believe that's going to bring in some additional, uh, owners as well as some current, uh, some of the 14 will be able to use that, those additional funds as well. Um, and so we're, we're seeking to get your approval for that. Chris, is there anything you wanted to add on that?
Yeah, I think the, the reason why is some of the property owners won't, uh, won't match the $20,000 as it is, they just don't want to match that much. So we, I think there's going to be a lot more extra money to increase up to the $30,000. One property's only using 4,500 of the actual funds, so we think some other property owners are, are going to be the same.
Matt, I saw in here somewhere, I don't know where we called it, they were, was it 325,000 that was allocated to that?
Yes, sir, 325,000. To date, only 13,395 has been spent, uh, with an additional $4,000 to be spent here very soon, I mean, we have the contract. But we have many, uh, many of these property owners on the cusp of, of getting, of getting their paperwork finalized, uh, so we anticipate a, a large chunk of that money starting to be spent very soon. Craig, is there anything you wanted to add to that, or her?
No, that's pretty accurate, I think it's been, it's been, I've enjoyed the conversations there, but yeah, I think the floodgate's about to finally open.
Good.
No, I'm good, I think everything's been said so far.
And they have to have those projects under contract by Labor Day? Is that the way of?
Yeah.
With a goal, so it's not a, it's a goal, it's not a drop dead?
Yeah, yeah, they're, CDVG to the, uh, HUD is, is, they're being really flexible considering the coronavirus.
Yes.
So Matt, how many altogether have signed up at this point?
Right now, we have four, they're work, we're working on 14.
Yeah.
Um, and then the 15th one is already completed.
Originally, we had 21 originally?
Good.
Yeah, and, and actually, some of the ones that we're doing will count as two because they have two facades, uh, to the building, so we may actually get real close to that 2021 number.
Okay.
Have you, have you heard, uh, when the deadline's going to be since the coronavirus is...
No, we're, we're, uh, we submitted a letter asking for an extension, um, and we don't anticipate any problems based upon feedback that we've gotten.
I'm sure we won't, we're just about maybe, we had a date, okay.
The flexibility that you just spoke about, um, will we be able to shift monies to other areas of the project if all the dollars aren't spent?
Yes, we've had a lot of conversations about that, and, um, there's something I've learned about the CDVG, it's, it's hard to give definitive answers to specific questions. So what we've been told is that there's going to be flexibility that if, um, for instance, you'll see here in a few minutes at Pavilion, when it gets close to the end of a project, uh, uh, they're pretty gracious about allowing you to shift funds to go towards other purposes. And, uh, is that, is that right Craig, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, they, uh, they typically don't want to do it in the last month, but, uh, they recognize, you know, that a project like this was planned years ago and things have changed a lot, and obviously, in, in this case, a lot of things have changed, uh, so they recognize there'll be some budget provisions as you head towards the finish line.
Well, I, I was concerned because the town has committed to 90, 90,000?
Uh, I think it's about 120,000.
Okay, 120,000, and anytime anything varies, uh, it seems the town's going to eat that cost, and that kind of concerns me, so I want to be able to have that flexibility to move these items in the budget where we need to.
Yeah. Any other questions on the facade improvement program? Any issues with raising the limit to 30,000?
No, I think it's great, I think the more, uh, you can get done, the better off it'll be.
Yes, sir, that's our, that's our opinion. Okay, then, um, so there's an attachment that you'll see, you can read through it at your leisure, um, and by the way, uh, the attachment says 2B and it's actually 2A, just so, just so you know. We, uh, short week was hard to put all this stuff together. Uh, the Pavilion. It's been a challenging project, we put it out to bid once again, and the bids came in, I think $3,000 less than the first bid, so we didn't save any money. We've gone around and around and around with that. CDVG needs guidance from the council, whether you want to move forward with Pavilion or not. Um, it's going to cost approximately 75,000, no, it's going to cost about 130, 100, and what was it, 150,000 more. Uh, 75,000 of it can be shifted from the facade grant program, which is CDVG money, the other 75,000 would have to come from, from our allocation or our monies. There's some thoughts about possibly using, about using some of the funds from the streetscape, which is the next item, well, it's an accident fourth item. But, in short, I think the CDVG's confident and staff and I are confident we can find the 75,000 from your current allocation of 120, but I need to know, is this still a priority project for council? Or would you rather use the 75,000 somewhere else? And that's just the overage.
Say that again, the 75,000's coming from where?
From part of this, um, we've allocated 120,000.
Right.
So within that 120,000, we could, we're going to take 75,000 from that, or take 50,000 from this, from that portion, and the other 25,000 out of a general fund.
Well, you know, again, uh, my opinion is, you know, with doing the block grant, uh, I think if, if we don't do the, the actual bathrooms and the Pavilion, I think as far as I'm concerned, the whole project has been a negative project. I think wherever we need to get that money, if there's any way possible, we need to complete that, to get those bathroom facilities and get the Pavilion built. If we, you know, if we don't do anything, streetscape, as far as I'm concerned, you know, streetscape can be put off, but the Pavilion, if we can get that amount of money, I think we need to, myself, that's my opinion, we need to show in good faith that we are doing what we, what we're supposed to be doing under the block grant.
Well, Pavilion's been targeted now for 20 years, so that down, down area, and it's really the focal point of this CDVG grant. So in my opinion, if it's a focal point, we ought to drive to push that forward. But there again, I want the flexibility to move funds that aren't utilizing these other pieces forward to this, because I don't think we should keep, uh, sharing the full burden every time that, uh, project is not moving in dollar-wise according to the budget that was laid out.
Do you have any idea on how much money, um, we could possibly pull from streetscape?
Yes, I do, that's, um, let's go ahead and talk about that now. So, the streets, the streetscape allocation, allocation was 70,000. Um, of the 70,000, we've, we've already spent 11,223. Uh, the contractor was willing, because of coronavirus, was willing to reduce his contract by 15%, um, which would have made the contract down to 59,000. As it states currently, we have a pending balance for that line item of 48,276.
I'd want to move it from streetscape over to the Pavilion, and from what I remember of the last meeting was that, that fee was just in design work, it wasn't any actual work done on the street.
Oh, yeah, the whole 70,000 is designed, there's no...
Yeah, there's no, there's no actual work being done on the 70,000.
Correct.
Make sure I got this straight, Matt, so out of the 325,000, um, that's being used for facades, if that total has not been used, we can possibly use some of that?
75,000.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're recommending, it's a, um, I believe, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a dollar for dollar, so if we move 75,000 out of facade, we have to spend 75,000.
So we have, what, 18, uh, people that are signed up, what is the total, um, that we have, and gonna, or do we have a, a rough idea of the total that's going to be worth that total?
I don't have a rough idea, I, I can get that for you, and maybe Craig might be able to pull it up on a spreadsheet, I don't have a spreadsheet with me. What I do know is that we're pretty confident, or very confident, that we could take the 75,000 out of the facade grant, use it for the Pavilion, and still satisfy the needs of, of our 18 people, 18, 20 people.
Yeah, and if I can say, you know, uh, I think Chris just mentioned we have one we're signing this Friday, it's only 4,500, you know, and some change, um, we've got another we're working with, it's 18,000, so not everybody's going to wind up being the 30, um, you know, but my guess is the average will be 20, 22, 23, so you can have some wiggle room on the back end after all of them get settled out.
Yeah, because 14 times 30,000 would be beyond the 325, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's not that. So, we have 59,500 left from the streetscape that we can use, um, uh, and we'll just have to try to find the other 15, $15,000. I think we can do it, so what do you think BJ?
Oh, yeah, I, I feel pretty good that we'll be able to find it.
So right now, you, we've got 209,000 plus, with the 150 plus the 59.
The 150, that's 48, right? It says the pending balance would be 48, right?
It would be if we, if we went with the 15%.
Well, we had a total of 70.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we took the 15% discount.
And they've already paid out.
So it'd be 60, yeah, 59.
Now, are you saying that you're not only going to go with, uh, Pavilion cost, but streetscape as well?
No, sir, no.
Okay, that's, that was a little confusing what Laurie just...
Yeah, I was reading the pending balance.
But I'm going to take that money and move it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so we move the 59 plus 150, that leaves 209, and the remainder will be brought forward somewhere.
Correct.
I would be in favor of that, I think it's a very worthy prod, project, and I think that the citizens will get a lot of use of that over the years. I know myself, I would have loved, oh, many a festival for there to have been a public restroom nearby, so...
Uh, okay, since that money is coming out, that our money, is that going to go to, uh, be approved by the council in a meeting?
Uh, when we do the budget amendment, I believe the, uh, the way it works is, is we have to make the application for the, um, the Commonwealth, uh, the Department of Housing to approve our request, and then it'll come back to us, and then we'll do another budget amendment.
Budget amendment, okay. Any other questions on that?
Good, so does the census board move forward to Pavilion?
Yes.
Great.
What about your murals then?
Okay, so, um, murals has been a really fun experience, so, uh, we've had numerous conversations about murals within the CDVG with Craig Wilson, and talking about establishing an advisory board, uh, to help advise the painting department on setting up criteria for, um, uh, you know, quality murals, maintenance of murals, uh, the process for it, as well as allocating money, uh, towards, uh, from the facade grant, allocating money towards the murals. Uh, Craig, did you want to update on where we stand with that?
Um, we just, you need, you, one of the things we found out, and this is just through conversation with DHCD, you know, a muralist is basically a person of one, a shop of one, you know, sole proprietor, uh, so we can cover labor and materials, um, but we, because if we try to cover labor and materials, we do have to put it out to bid. Um, and so we've written that RFQ to ask for folks that are interested and qualified to be muralists, um, to kind of identify themselves, and then, you know, they'd be able to work with the committee to, uh, to plan the several, you know, that would happen, um, and we would be able to, there'd be a little bit of federal paperwork they'd have to fill out even as a sole proprietor, uh, but not nearly as much as you have if you've got employees. Um, and then they're also not subject to any kind of particular wage rate, uh, because, you know, the, the manager of a company is not subject to the wage decision, just the employees, and they are, you know, again, a company of one. It gives us a little more flexibility, but we, in order to get that flexibility, we have to go through the RFQ process and officially bid it out.
Have you all, uh, made any reference to what kind of murals that we're referring to?
I think that's what the committee, that advisory committee would come up with some standards, so to speak, and then present to council and say, this is what we think is suitable for our community, et cetera, et cetera.
You know, I think we'd even mentioned before that the council, some of the council are agreed to, or sort of technically agreed to have murals that represent somewhat something that, that's really in the valley, the Channell Valley.
Yeah, right.
And not some of these off of the wall murals that I've seen in other towns, that I like to see us have a, a mural that represents something that, you know, that we can be proud of, pictures of rivers or mountains, or whatever, whatever, whatever. And I think, in my personal feeling, we should be more inclined to the Channell Valley, it's something that would be more pertinent to that.
Yeah, I, I think we have to come up with some standards and guidelines, and then from that, you know, people can apply for the, the grant and get, you know, $10,000 spent on a mural.
But the committee, this committee will be the ones that will give the approvals of the murals?
No, they'll, they'll go through CDVG.
Okay.
So the actual approvals will go through CDVG and there's a, uh, BAR?
Depending on where it's located, yeah. Well, it'd have to be BAR if it's CDVG funds, because it's facade grant, so, so the bar would have to make, make the approval.
But are, are we going to have a theme? That's what, that's really the question, are we going to have?
Well, would we have the final approval?
Yeah, I think that's what the, that's what this advisory board's going to do.
Okay, that was my question then.
Yeah, the advisory board's going to come up with those guidelines and the standards and the themes and the recommendation, et cetera.
Okay.
And then, um, sit down with the, the applicant and try to figure out musically what they're going to determine to be the right mural for that location. So Cloud Street might have some clouds, and Church Street may have some church, pictures of an old church, or, maybe Becky could explain more, considering, actually, I said Becky, Mary Ellen is involved in the mural advisory board. Okay. So, anything you want to say?
I mean, I don't know, I, I'm probably not a good representative, but, um, my father's a local artist, and he's the one who kind of put it together, and he actually does a lot of landscapes and things like that, so, um, we just want to be able to identify good, quality artists that can really put some nice stuff.
Yeah, so they're helping to recruit artists, so...
I think what you're asking though, um, Mayor Tewa, is will we, will we as a council have any input as to what the mural is, or is it just going to be hiring an artist and they put their own spin on what it's, I think, isn't that what you're kind of asking, like?
Yeah, I want to make sure, I, I...
Well, I'd say at this point, no.
Yeah.
If, if it has nothing to do with CDVG, if someone out on South Street decides they want to put a mural up, all they do is submit a sign permit, and as long as it's not an advertising, nothing obscene or anything, then it's going to get approved.
Okay.
And that's all, that's the process, there's nothing in the code that says it would have to be reviewed. That's kind of why, if, if council wants to do a mural committee, and then it would be placing the code into the sign ordinance, that, um, there is a process and a review process, and, um, a little bit more control, I guess, and, I, I know nothing about art, so... Well, would we, or would we not have final approval, council itself?
No, it sounds like that's a no.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, again, you would have input on the guidelines and the standards and direction and themes, and you would have that, but I think ultimately, to be able to approve each and individual applicant, I think that's more in the weeds than council needs to go.
Well, I mean, not approving the applicant, but approving what they plan on putting up.
I, you could if you wanted to put that in the code.
I mean, I don't know, what do you guys think, I mean? I mean, you may be going down a slippery slope or not.
Yeah, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I'll, but I also would, if it's something that we're going to be looking at for many, many years to come, I would hope that there, but if it would go before the committee, is that what you're saying?
I think the, the whole reason why we came up with the idea is because, like Chris said, there isn't any kind of standard right now, anybody can put a mural of basically whatever they want, and they can use, you know, they can paint it themselves, or they can use whoever.
Right.
Yeah, hire some...
But if it comes out of the block grant, though, that's a little different situation.
Correct, or if it's within a historic district, different situation.
Right, give you a little bit of control, but...
And again, the, the idea is not to be onerous, but the idea is to, is to create a theme within our whole community of good quality murals.
Basically curate the murals.
And they would actually find locations as well, and get those locations pre-approved for a mural. Um, they would already go through the bar, not knowing what it is, but based off the guidelines, get pre-approval for a site, um, so...
But the, you know, the main thing I want is a theme, I mean, we need a theme that's going to represent our community in some respect, not things that are, or that feel something.
Well, we didn't know what things were until artists moved into town and started painting a few, and I was very much, uh, pleased with what I saw she did.
I was pleased with those two.
And Mary Ellen, I'm very encouraged that your father's involved in it, because I know that he will do quality work, so...
I don't know if he wants to actually paint the murals, but he wants to be involved, so, yeah.
That's all I had on murals, uh, Craig or Herb, is there anything you guys wanted to add about the murals?
I, I think between the, this CDVG committee and the team and the, um, BAR, I mean, I think we all understand what, what council is, is, what you, want to hear what you're, you know, what you're looking for. I think the process that the mural committee will come up with, with the review with the CDVG, we'll, we understand that, so I think we all want to have appropriate type of murals in our downtown, so I don't think, I don't think y'all have to be concerned.
Anybody got any other questions? Okay, next item tonight is a free book request to place love letters on the town right away.
Did we skip the D? Are we done with D?
No, we did.
We already did that, we're just done.
Yeah.
No, D was streetscape.
Yeah, we talked about where the money...
Okay, streetscape is gone, sorry.
Money's gone.
Money's gone, D.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, if you haven't driven past Main and Commerce, you'll see that the Jack Evans, used to be the old pavement now, Jack Evans, uh, used car lot, uh, you see the love letters that are placed there, uh, Freebo's approached, uh, the town wanting that to be a permanent location. Um, we did verify that, uh, uh, we do have a D that the town had given a portion of that... We did verify that we do have a deed that the town had given a portion of that land to the owner, but there is still a sliver of land that is town's property, so I've granted a temporary permit to have it there, but wanted to get your direction to see how you felt about making that a permanent location and allowing Freeba to place those signs, or that sign on our right away.
I kind of questioned that only because, to me, I thought, like, having the love letters was kind of like a hunting expedition, like you had to go find the love letters, but we have them everywhere. So, that's why, because I knew that we approved to have them down by the visitor's center, which to me made sense, it was a great photo op. But now we have like, what, four, I think, including the one that the county is gonna do?
Where's, where's, I know we had the, you see, which one?
Gardena Road.
That's the county.
Well, yes, the county, yeah, but isn't there one at the Apple House?
That's county.
Well, I mean, yeah, but I'm like.
Oh, you got two, right?
I think the two sets that are in town, Freeba bought those two, I don't think they paid for anymore.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wasn't worried about who paid.
No, I'm saying, I think they don't have two though.
Gotcha.
In my personal opinion about those, I have no problem with them. I, I think it needs dressed up some more. That's, that's my issue with it. It needs, it needs a flyer, nice flyer garden or, or something there.
Make it stand out.
That's the only problem I have with it. I love it, I think it's fine.
Yeah, there's talk about putting lighting and, as well as bushes.
It's really boring right now.
As long as it's dressed up, I have no problem.
My only thought too was, is this gonna be like a permit, like we're saying, this is gonna be like a permanent, they can be there forever kind of thing?
Well, as long as council wants it there and council.
Okay, so you can always change it if you, and are, is the nearby business okay with that too? Okay, because I, that, however long that business is in there.
Yeah, they're gonna have to grant, because I think some of the sign might actually be on their property as well.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of what I, just as long as they're okay with people stopping and taking pictures and, I mean, that's probably maybe a good thing for their business, but I just didn't want.
They're deciding for the location, just because the location may be a little bit on the town property and probably the majority of it, I actually wouldn't measure it today, so the E is 14 feet from, to the grass line, so it could be, the E could be on town property, it may not be based off of the actual measurements, so.
So, what I hear from council is you're, you're okay with a permanent location, dress it up, and have the ability to remove it or have it moved, you know, be released, in other words, we're not responsible for any damage to the sign, it's not our responsibility. Okay, we'll get, Doug, we can get you to draft something like that. Okay?
Because it's a removable, the idea is they can move it to other places, I mean, that's, that's, that was the whole idea, was that that particular set could be moved.
Right.
Right, or that's how I read it in there, right?
It said that we had to install it, so I thought it was like more permanent, it wasn't going to be.
Says on a permanent basis but not in use, so I thought that was the whole idea with these, was that you move them to things if there were other stuff going on with festivals and things like that, or that's how I thought it was originally, and then this is what this is permitted for me, temporary signs and allowed signs, yeah.
I got what I mean, I mean, you don't object to it, we'll work out, we'll work out the details. Thank you.
Okay, next item tonight is purchase of the VESTA 911 phone system for the chief, please. Matt?
Thanks, sir. BJ, do you want to start on that one and I'll pull in chief?
So, a few weeks ago, council approved a budget amendment to, for contingency funds, and then we moved some of the contingency funds over to other projects, this is one of the other projects. We set aside $100,000 for the funding system for the police department. This will help getting them up and ready for the PSAP and so we can get backup for the Warren County Sheriff's Office. The purchase of this communication agreement is gonna be about $82,000, so we're asking for council's approval to move forward with the purchase. Chief's here, if I ask any questions about the system.
BJ, is this the issue we had, that we couldn't communicate between the county and the town, and this was gonna take care of that issue?
So, this, this solves a couple of problems, ladies and gentlemen. One, the public, public safety answering points, which is the PSAP, the governor's actually requiring what they, what's being known as the next generation NG 911 to be rolled out across the state. We're buying the eight ball, it was supposed to happen July 1st, I think COVID-19 has put, put things behind a lot of that, and we were kind of caught unawares because we weren't a primary 911 answering point, but even being a secondary and receiving transferred calls from the sheriff's office, what this next generation 911 allows to happen is for like text to 911, people send photo videos, and of course that sounds kind of silly, those of us are used to using the telephone, but that's kind of the way, generationally, things are going, as well as being able to better service the deaf and hard of hearing communities with the 911 service. The side benefit of doing this is that the, the county couple, I guess it's been about a month ago now, completely lost their 911 capabilities, and all those calls had to be routed to Rappahannock County and then transferred to our shop where we had Warren County dispatchers kind of housed to be able to dispatch their calls. While that was occurring there, actually their admin phone lines went down as well, so all those phone lines and phone calls were routed back to us over there also. So this project, we're only seeing a little piece of it that actually impacts our building. The county is that we're kind of piggybacking on their project, that they're actually taking on the bulk of the major infrastructure for this project, the recorders and servers, all that's being provided by the county, and we're just, we're purchasing the equipment to be able to outfit our building to supplement that. But at the end of the day, what we'll have is that modernized 911 system, we'll be able to answer the 911 calls and we'll have redundancy in case of emergency, like, like we just had. If, if something goes bad in our shop, we can send dispatchers over to theirs and we'll still be able to, to dispatch the appropriate resources and vice versa. If something happens up there and their building is affected, they can, they can bring folks down to our building and be able to, to dispatch from there as well. So, those are kind of the high points of, of this particular project.
And all the funds has already been allocated through our budget?
Actually came in cheaper too.
Came in a hundred, came in less.
Actually came in cheaper.
Yeah.
It's almost dead, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's gonna be a little bit more installation that has to be done, so it'll be a little bit more than the 82,000.
Fiber, fiber, fiber needs to be run, I think, until, until about 14 grand-ish.
So, we need to put this on the agenda for later?
Yes, for council approval to make the purchase.
Okay. Is that right with the first council? I think I have a separate item, but.
You don't want to consent?
Well, you spent $100,000, I think you need to make an actual approval of it through the other way.
Okay.
Any other questions on number, number four? Number five is purchase of replacement in-car and body warrant cameras.
BJ, turn it over to you.
Again, this is a purchase that exceeds the threshold, where council will have to have approval. What we're looking for is to enter into an agreement with WatchGuard for body cameras. This will be for a period of five years, $32,440 for each year, zero percent interest for a leasing program that's offered through them, and this will take care of our body cameras and the replacements here, hopefully for the next five years. Just another kind of housekeeping item, chief.
So, so we're about, we're about two generations behind our current body cameras. The warranties expired on all of them as of July of last year, so the ones that have been going, going down and needing repair and replaced, we've kind of been working that out of the last year's budget. The in-car camera systems, of which we have 10, are set to expire February of '21, so that's a situation where that's gonna have to be upgraded. We identified this purchasing solution through, through WatchGuard to where, and essentially it's, it's kind of a rolling stock type of situation, when, when, you know, they come out with a new version of a camera, they just replace them, and we don't have to worry about kind of the situation we're in now. If we were to, if, if some of our cameras were to go down and we replace them, well, they come with different docking stations than the ones that we currently have, so they just replace our, our whole stock at that time. As their upgrades come out and software patches and things like that come available, it's kind of a one-stop solution for at least the next five years.
Is there gonna be additional funding or is that all covered under the?
It'll be under that 162 CIP that we put in, and it'll be roughly 32, 33,000.
Yeah, 30,000 for the next five years.
Yeah, the annual, annual, annual cost.
And that does include the maintenance solutions, I guess?
I mean, it's everything, it's, it's a turnkey solution, it covers our interview room cameras, our in-car camera systems, as well as body one cameras.
Great, yes, sir. Any other questions? Go ahead and put that on the agenda as well, man.
Separate item? What, what I could do, can I put all three of those as one agenda item?
You can do that, that'll be fine.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we agreed to summary, so everybody knows what, what that money's for.
Okay.
Okay, item six is VTEC's radio consoles.
Same, same thing here, we need council's approval for the purchase of this, total's gonna be $57,822 over the course of six years. This is to purchase some replacement consoles and also for the maintenance agreement on the consoles there. Chief, again, you want to give a little background on this one?
So, with this one, of course, we just, we purchased our new radio system last year and unbeknownst to us at the time, and I think some of the reps that were at Motorola, the, the situation was kind of bought out, I guess they, they made some big corporate moves at the last minute. The, the radio consoles that were actually installed, the MIT 5000, they are obsolete, they, once they were purchased, they're no longer making those, so they're, they're only serviceable up until next year. So, the rest of our radio system, of course, we've got a maintenance contract out for five years at least at this point. So we went back to the drawing board with them. What has happened is they've, again, it's kind of a next generation thing, they've, they've offered the solution of supplying a, a much more capable console, and after we, after we worked on it for a little bit, they came down to about $80,000 worth of equipment. They've come down to a purchase or a, a sale price of those, I guess, is, which is essentially installation and incidentals, so roughly around $12,000. The remaining balance of that $57,000 price tag is the maintenance service agreement for years two through six, comes out to about $9,000 a year that we'll be budgeting for to manage those consoles.
Well, what happened to the contract we had with Motorola, I mean, that was a big chunk of money.
It was, and so, it's not the entire system, it's just the actual consoles at the workstation. And it, it's just one of those things where they, they installed equipment and then had phased out one of the pieces of equipment before we even got to warranty period. They, you know, at first they were like, well, we can sell you some spare parts in case they do bad, and we weren't, weren't really interested in doing that, so.
Yeah, we, we hammered them pretty hard, actually I hammered them real hard, and several times.
Now, is the head league, are they still under the Motorola contract?
They wanted to try to get us to pay 80,000.
Well, it's, it's, so, it's changed hands a couple of times, Motorola is the, is kind of the end of the road, and, and they're the ones that have made the concessions that, that we've found ourselves becoming amenable to at this point. It's going to change our service contract for the radio systems as well, because again, it's, I think, $9,000 a year for the consoles. Now, that existing contract that we have provided some coverage for those MIT 5000s that are being replaced, so that will be credited back to that service contract, but gosh, we're gonna have to have a discussion about that because we've had, had to talk with Motorola, because all the public work radios are Motorola as well, a different, it's a different system, but I think the talks that we've had is we're actually going to absorb all of that service contract within our budget, so we'll have to talk about a realignment of those funds. So, there will be a, a little bit of a credit given for the, kind of the existing consoles that will be coming off, and then there'll be an allocation made for the upgraded ones that'll be going in.
Or is the county involved in this, because they, they were?
They've got different consoles.
Oh, they do, I thought they went?
They, they got Motorola as well, but they've got a different system.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all compatible, we can talk to each other, but they have different equipment than we have.
So, we have to buy these consoles, we can't, do they, is there like, like the, the cameras, the in-car cameras and you're like, and like, you lease those?
Right.
Is there, do, does Motorola have a leasing program to where?
On the radio systems?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, it's something we can certainly look into, but essentially we're getting.
Because when they change.
At this point, we're getting them for, for, kind of for free.
Right.
We're only being charged in installation and incidentals on it.
Right.
It's, I think the, I want to say it was about $87,000.
Yeah, $87,000.
And Matt, Matt had, had a discussion with them, we're gonna get those actual pieces, it's gonna cost, those parts are gonna cost us about 12 grand, so.
So we're just paying for the, we're just paying for the actual new parts that are needed and the labor and not the actual normal cost of $87,000.
Right, and it will, that's where the other, the other dollars in that $57,000 figure come from, is the maintenance service agreement for years two through six, so.
Are we, are we getting new, new or replacing?
They're completely new, it's a totally different, it's, it's actually about twice as functional as the ones that are going out, so.
Got it.
I do understand why they replaced them, yes.
Yeah, no, I just saw the word replacement, I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting that again.
Yeah.
We don't want to be two years from now, we gotta do this again.
No, it's a totally, it's a, it's a totally new system.
Probably will.
Actually, the way technology is, I would say it's always changing, so.
These are, these are warranted for a year and then we'll have five years of, of maintenance service with that, so.
If they change, it should be covered up, chief.
Right.
If it's your warranty, it's on, you know, if they change, it's up to them to figure that out, so.
So, Kate, in regards to that, let's pretty much fill you in with all the radios, the system in complete, just as far as will you be coming back with something else in the close near future?
Time will tell, but I certainly hope that, I certainly hope that we're covering all of the technological bases that we have right now.
That's what I'm asking, I mean, you don't foresee anything that's coming up in the future, because, I mean, we're spending.
It's gonna be a big year, it's gonna be a big year with police reforms, but I'm hoping that the body cameras and, and the in-car cameras will, will help with that, but, yeah, it's, it's going to be an interesting, interesting time, and I, I can't speak to what may be thrust upon us that we get to deal with, but.
I know that with the radios are about half a deal, and with this, we, we're spending like $800,000 on radio equipment for the police departments, so I'm hoping that that'll be the, pretty much like I said, the final stages.
Me too.
All right, anybody else got any questions?
All the problems.
Okay, next thing tonight is liaison committee meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to get a sense from council if we had any items we want to place on the liaison. We came up this morning in our staff meeting with one potential item, BJ, anyone remember? I forgot what it was, I've left my notes in my office.
Swag it.
Swag it, thank you, Doug. Yeah, just keeping, keeping, keeping them abreast of the swag at progress, but if there's anything anyone can see, you know, please let me know, I'll have it on the work session. I'm in the regular meeting next week.
What about that?
Sorry?
What about number nine? We gonna need that on there anymore?
Sorry, I'm lost.
Oh, he's saying the resolution to the general assembly.
To the EDN.
No, so this was the old, this was the old agenda.
I know, but these are the ones we're gonna remove and they had others, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can, this was just what we went over last time, we can talk about which items you wanted to talk, keep on for the 16th, sure, there's no reason to talk about number nine.
That's why I say we need to take that one off, number nine that I see.
Sure.
And 11.
11.
We're kind of done with that.
Right, 11's been resolved.
I guess we could update them on number four, what we, because we've done some.
Past resolution, past resolution.
Yeah.
Max, all this data center, give me a little update on that. Number, apparently no, I have the sheet, number six.
You know, I haven't, I didn't, I didn't know what you.
I didn't know, I thought you were referring to number nine to close session on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number, number six, though, what is the data center? Is that the building permits and all that program, or what is it? Or is it, oh, I think I know what it is.
Right.
I'm sorry. Okay, disregard.
Okay.
Is the inspection software working, Chris and everybody?
What's the...
Building inspection software?
Inspection software is all that, and...
Well, InGOV, yeah, I mean, it's been the same, working fine.
Yes, some of the...
I haven't been out inspecting anybody, but it's good.
I just was curious, so they took us, what, three years, four years?
This is the lead, this is the one, they have their...
Does anybody want to add any more to that other than the swag? Anybody want to take anything off other than what we took out?
Do we have updates regarding the boundary adjustment with transparency?
They denied it.
They denied it.
So we can probably take that off.
There we go.
Okay, just if you think of items, let me know, and I can add it, and then we can get a formal approval.
When's the actual meeting?
16th of July.
Who's up to, who's up to meet?
I'm sorry, I will get you that information. I should have found that out.
I think I met last time, last meeting we had.
I'll have, I'll have Tina send that out in the morning, who's up?
Yeah, I think it'll be at the, out at the government building, correct?
Yes.
Should be.
Last one's up here.
Yes. I'll just say, Matt, make sure that, get with Doug and make sure that we are aware of anything that they're going to put on here as well. I believe the last time we had a couple items that we didn't know was going to be on the agenda, as I recall. I don't remember who was with me there, but boy, did somebody was with me. Me and you, it might have been, I, I don't remember, I know it was...
It was back in...
January, January 23rd.
There was a couple items that we didn't know they were going to be on the agenda, so make sure that we get those before we have to, so we can prove it all, what that...
Okay.
Anybody else got anything to say on that? Okay, number eight is the planning commission term expire August the 30th.
Yeah, Mr. Gordon's term expires, just wanted to know, hang tough about reappointing.
He's, he's expressed interest, he wants to consider...
We got, we got a lot of people waiting on him.
Yeah, there's, be downstairs.
We'll keep him.
All right, consent agenda, you go with that?
Yeah. Okay, before we go into the closed meeting, I want to open it up to the floor, anybody got anything they wanted to discuss this evening, that was not on the agenda?
Just, Matt, do we have any progress as far as the blighted buildings yet? I mean, I had that on my list to...
Yes, sir. How many letters went out? Blighted buildings?
Could you speak up a little? We can't hear you back here.
I was just updating on blighted, blighted buildings.
Yes.
Well, the one, the property owner has signed for it, so actually, I think it's, the cut-off was this week. I have to double check my letter. But I haven't, haven't had any response from the property owner. And to be honest, I haven't even been by the property since then, so I don't know if someone's been out there cleaning it up, doing what we need to be done, so. But I think the, because we gave them 35 days.
Yeah, 35 days to respond?
Yeah.
How many letters have we sent out?
Just one.
Just the one.
Just one.
This is our test case.
Yeah.
So we have some in queue that are, eh?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've got several identified, but we wanted to go through.
See how it goes. Test case, I like those.
Workout bugs.
If you all haven't been up there yet, y'all need to write up on Steel Street. And that's one of our projects that we had completed, and it really looks nice.
Good.
If you haven't seen it, you need to write up like that.
Looks like a totally different area.
It does, it looks good, and that was one of our areas that really needed attention. Appreciate all the work that Public Works and everybody does, because, like I said, if you haven't been up there, it really looks nice. And we put all, you know, we put all new curb and gutter, then we come back and we relay this and drainage and things like that, so it really does, it makes that, it's part of it.
Oh, it just makes it completely different.
Yes.
Neighborhood.
Anybody else got anything to work with that?
I know you're good on time, we got, we're short on time.
Yeah, go ahead, if you want to bring it up.
Okay. I have, Todd, you still here?
Yes, sir.
Time clocks, electronic time clock?
Yeah.
We didn't get it added to the agenda in time because of the short week, but figured we had enough time tonight, we could bring it up. BJ, you want to discuss or Todd?
Better Todd take the lead on this one.
Sure, so we're looking to move into an electronic timekeeping system that will make things in HR significantly easier for them, and along with keeping records better and have better accuracy. The electronic timekeeping system, there's a subscription we pay per user, so every employee has to have a subscription with it. That adds up to roughly $10,000 a year for the subscription service, and then the clocks, we're ordering seven clocks to be placed appropriately for different people to log in and out, log in and out of accordingly. Those seven clocks are the bulk of the, the bulk of the expense, the clocks are very expensive. We did choose a lesser expensive clock, and the clock allows you, allows the appropriate employees to do what they need to do, then they can also use the computer system, their own personal computers to, for different people to check their system, supervisors and different things to check what's going on and such. So, and the system's also designed to integrate with our existing payroll system, so no longer do we have to enter in every single employee's time individually, that's what they're currently doing right now. The new system will allow it to automatically, once everything's set in, in the system, they can automatically just import that information into the payroll system.
BJ, how much, we, we've had this money budgeted for, what, three years?
Yes, we've had it budgeted for two years. We, we had budgeted $25,000, and we just set aside another $10,000, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So we have a total of $35,000 set aside for the project already.
So y'all haven't put it out for bid or anything, correct?
It's, it's being purchased under a purchasing contract.
State?
Uh, no, I think it's a national contract.
As long as we follow that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. We don't mess with that.
Yeah, we, yeah. So $10,000 a year?
Yeah.
And we already got $35,000 set aside?
Yes.
And it will, it'll be a recurring $10,000 a year once those...
It'll be a reoccurring fee of $10,000 a year that will go up and down according to how many town employees we have.
Reoccurring $10,000 a year.
Todd, will our employees be able to build in and make changes to deductions, be able to print, you know, pay slips? I mean, is, will they be capable of doing that?
Some of that stuff is managed, you'll be able to keep track of their, their vacation time put in for vacation time, put in for time off, and things like that through the system as well.
Will they be able to, like, print the W2s, will they be able to...
The W2s are generated in a different system, so this system doesn't, it's simply a timekeeping system that allows you to track their hours and their vacation time and such.
So it's different, it's definitely different from ADP then?
It's different from ADP, yes.
It's a, it's a, it's made by a company called Kroto's. They use it in a number of different locations.
The key is getting it to integrate with our current platform.
Yes.
That's always a problem with everything.
That's the challenge.
Without that link, it's almost a waste of time.
Do you see us possibly moving to that sort of a system anytime soon, Todd, or?
Uh...
I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we should do it all at one time, and...
Well, that payroll system's completely integrated with the entire finance department, and, and they use it for a bunch of other stuff, a significant amount of stuff beyond payroll, so all of that would have to change. We can look at that, but it's much, much, a much bigger scope than this.
Todd, so, when, I just want to ask, and I'm sure you guys know this, anytime you do something like this, it's helping, it's helping time spent. Is there any, I mean, kind of like I felt like with the swag it, you know what I mean? In, in the end, you actually are freeing up time for your employees to be able to do other things, so, or can we anticipate how that would, you know, in, in the payroll department, how this will impact their life and their, their time, not, you know, I mean, their time or task?
Yeah, so, so, right. I'm embarrassed to a degree, the town's timekeeping process is very antiquated. It's manual.
Completely manual.
Completely manual. So you have everybody adding up all these hours, and then you have payroll processing it and manually inputting it. It's going to save many hours.
Not just in payroll, in all the departments, it sounds like.
It's going to save many hours.
Great, great.
Many, many hours.
That's, that's, that's kind of...
It just astonished me when I got on board to find out it was still a manual, handwritten.
Matt, we put our money into contingencies, right? Is this going to affect the Cobra, COVID thing? Is this going to have to be brought back forward? This money for this and the police department, or is that money still in their budget?
No, we have, we have the money.
Yeah, the money's still in the budget. This was not taken out and put towards contingency, this was, this was remaining in the budget.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't have to bring anything forward to, to council.
Yes, sir.
All right, y'all have any other questions on any of this?
No.
Long pause due.
You want to go ahead and put it on the agenda Monday night?
Yes.
This can be on the consent, it can be on the consent agenda, right, because it's not a large...
Yeah, we could be on the consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else you need us to squeeze in here?
I can't, I can't.
While we got, while we got a little bit of time, yeah, it was a big, had a lot to do tonight.
I'm glad you're done. That concludes our work session, we're seeing item number nine, and we're going to have to go into a closed meeting here in a few minutes, and Bill, would you read us into that, please?
Yes. I move the town council go into a closed meeting for the purpose of consideration or interviews with selected candidates for employment in town pursuant to section 2.2-3711. Point A, point one of the Code of Virginia.
Okay. Can we vote on that in here today? You don't, well, just take the consensus. Just take your own call. Natasha?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Here.
Just...
Jay.
Okay, we're going to be going into closed meeting at this time. Thanks, everybody.
I think we're going to have to...